Does everybody reviewed the minute?
Bob Sheehan has.
Rob has.
Lil, I have.
I have. I wasn't here for the meeting. She can't vote. Yeah.
And so are I. So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Monday, September 28th, 2020 minutes as written.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Bob Sheehan?
Aye.
Lilian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
This conference will now be recorded.
Jason?
Upstaying.
Jim?
Aye.
Minister approved. Okay. I don't have any bills here in the folder. Do you have anything, Will?
No, I do not.
That was easy. Alright. A and R Bachelor Street's next. Has everybody reviewed the plans?
I have.
I have.
I have.
And I have.
Guess what? I haven't.
Is anybody presenting for them?
I don't think so. So basically, it looks to me like there's a 29, almost a 30-foot I don't know what you want to call it, a easement or a roadway from the existing lot in the front out to Bachelor Brook. And it looks like they're conveying that to the, to the 4.9 acres behind it, Lot 2.
I would agree with that.
That's, well, they're not actually making a lot, they're just conveying uh, basically a path they had, I guess. Okay. Does anybody have any issue with it?
I do not.
There's, there's no, there's no frontage issues or anything along those lines. They're just moving the property line from the old lot line to the new. It has the locust, so we know where it is.
So it's not an access way to the lot on Bachelor Street, is it?
No. Basically, it was part of the lot in the front and they just, it was almost like a reverse flag lot. And they're just conveying it or selling it back to the, or selling it to the owners of the lot behind it, widening their lot.
So from Lot 1 to Lot 2, that's where it's going?
Yes. Yep. So if there's no issue with it, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the A and R plan for Robert Seibert and Lori Carmody. Let's see, pre, uh, filed or done by Harold L. Eaton and Associates Incorporated.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by Jason. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Bob Sheehan?
Aye.
Lilian?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Jims an aye. Motion carries.
Now, Jim, you and Jason are signing the plans there and then you're going to give them to Kathy?
Correct.
Oh, the rest of us will need to make arrangements with Kathy to get over there and sign them.
Right. Does Kathy leave them downstairs for everybody to come in and sign them, or she bring them down?
Uh, she's brought them down when I've been there.
Yeah, you're better off to notify her that you're coming and she can meet you at the door with the plans rather than opening the door when you ring the bell and having to go back upstairs and get them.
Yeah, up and down those stairs, let me tell you.
Yeah.
It's not just for us. Okay, the next thing, oh, wait a minute, before we get a check?
That one, yes, it was in with the paperwork. For 250.
There it is. I got, I see the copy now. Perfect. Okay, now we're on to A and R Harris Street. Is there anybody online that's representing A and R Harris Street?
Yes, Heather Hobante's here.
Hi Heather.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Okay. Does everybody had a chance to review them?
Well, there's a lot missing here.
What, what do you mean?
Are we looking at the site plan? This is the A and R for Harris Street.
Yes, so essentially what we're looking to do is, of Lot 149, the driveway was not in this, was not on the plan. I don't know how to get that not to echo.
Okay, well, we'll work with you. So what, so what do we, oh, so we're taking Lot 149 and we're moving it over to include the whole.
Right, so 149 149 is going to now include the driveway.
There's a very large cricket here.
Someone cooking or fire line going on?
And 151 has, now has the septic included, so the bump out on 151 sadly affects 145. So I, I wrote the check for $375 even though we're just making two very minor adjustments to the plan.
Okay, the only paperwork I have here is an incomplete site plan. That's all I have. I have no other paperwork.
So you, okay, so I've asked Randy to forward a new PDF, but Kathy has all of the, she's got the Mylar and all the printed out and the locust is on those. We opened them up in front of her and she saw it, she's like, yes, it's there because the original PDF did not have it. She has all of the paperwork, she has the check. And so the only thing missing, and he unfortunately did not forward it, I called him on Friday to get the updated PDF. So I'm sure that that's what you're referring to.
Right, well, I can't make any decision on this without seeing all the paperwork. So if, Jim, if you're looking for a decision tonight, I'm abstaining.
Um, and, and that's okay. Heather, is, is there any particular urgency to this?
We're trying to get it put into our name, so before we see our attorney who is retiring, we're trying to, so we inherited this from our parents after my mom passed, so we're trying to get the lots just drawn so that the, the three lots are whole before we go to him so that we're not incurring extra costs. I don't know when your meeting again, if it's now two times a month or if it's just once a month. If it were two weeks, I don't think that would be an issue. If it's another month, I mean, I'll, I'll drive them to whomever I need to drive them to if I need to go back and get them back from Kathy. I mean, I'm happy to help in any way. Or I don't know if in the interim, as soon as I can get that, or I go get the, get them and I create the PDF myself, I'm happy to do that as well. I thought he might be able to do that. He's, it took me a number of months, let's just say, to get these. It's been a couple of years since he's done, you know, the site work, so.
So nobody's seen the plans?
No.
No.
So how do you do it if, if I were to get the PDF, is that something that can happen in the interim, or does that need to wait for the next meeting?
And nobody, nobody can vote on it because they haven't seen the plans.
Okay, so it's because of COVID, right? Otherwise, you would be there, be looking at the physical?
Correct.
The Mylars, et cetera. Okay.
And everything meets the requirements. But I can't ask.
Except for the locust isn't there. Yeah, I got it. I understand. Um, yeah. Are you meeting more than once a month now, or is it monthly?
No, we're meeting twice, twice a month, if there's enough information for us to, you know, enough as an agenda.
Sure. So if I'm able to get that for the next meeting, then I'll go back, get the plans from her and I'll just do it myself so that I'm not, I'm reliant on him and then she can forward the plans to you prior to the next meeting?
Right. Other than that, everything's here. Locust is on. The dimensions all meet the requirements. You've got four hard copies. Yeah, it's on here. It's on there.
Oh, so someone let you get the physical plans?
It's the, yeah.
Okay, got you. So one, some, some of you are in person and some are not, then?
Yeah, there's two of us in person and the other three members are remote. And they did not have a PDF to review prior to the meeting, so hard for them to ask, vote on something that they haven't seen.
Okay, well, I feel better that someone is looking at them physically and feels comfortable, you know, is, is, says that everything is there that needs to be there. Maybe I will come and just get them back from her if that's possible and I'll get, I'll go and get them printed and create a PDF myself. If that's what that needs to happen.
It's however you'd like to do it. The check amount is correct, it's 375 because you're altering three lots, the large lot and then the, and then the 149 and 151, each of them have been altered, so the check amount is correct.
Which was kind of a bummer considering there are only two lines, but.
Yeah, you know.
Is the application there too?
Yes. Okay, I will give it one more attempt to get the PDF from Randy. If I can't get it from him, I will go down myself. I'll get the, I'll pick them up and I'll just figure out the PDF component and get it back to you.
The other thing, the other thing that could happen is everybody could review the plans when they go down to sign the other one.
That would be awesome.
I'd rather have the PDF. No, I'd rather have the PDF.
Okay.
Do you know the next date that you're meeting?
Uh, we haven't discussed it, but it should be, look at the calendar.
November 9th. It should be November 9th if we're on schedule.
Two weeks. Okay. I will make sure that there's a PDF this week, so you have time to review.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heather.
Um, can I ask one other question, or can you just let me know if there's an open time for questions during your agenda tonight?
No, go ahead and ask, no.
I was just wondering if there had been any more discussion on the language for the bylaw adjustment for my business plan?
There has been some discussion, but right now this board's on hold due to COVID. There's a, there's a, a list of other items that we're proposing for bylaw changes. And we can't do anything. We can't hold hearings, we can't hold any type of progress speak of and prior to six weeks of a town meeting. And right now due to COVID and the cost of town meetings, my, the last I spoke with, the last time I spoke with town administrators office, they have no, they have nothing scheduled in the near future.
Near future meaning 2020, or is that going to push into 2021, do you think? And I'm just asking because my whole life is basically on hold trying to figure this out, and I, I don't want to do it wrong. I want you all to be very comfortable with my, with me moving forward.
Yeah, I understand. But, but there's, but like I said, there's other items that we're trying to get hearings on and then hopefully submitted to, to the town at a meeting for a, for a town vote.
Okay.
And everything's on hold.
Okay.
And nothing will happen in 2020?
No, I understand. It probably won't be 2020.
As soon as, as soon, we know, as soon as we know when there's going to be a town meeting that we, we could potentially present to, then, then we'll, we'll work the clock back from there to make sure that anything that we're endorsing is, is presented then so that we're not causing additional meetings, additional expenses to the town. And right, and right, the last, the last meeting, town meeting, was back in the summer and it was held outside in tents.
Yeah.
And the, the expense of that was, was was high, so they're not, they're not, of course, we're going into the winter months now too, so to hold something like that outdoors isn't, isn't practical or feasible, so. We haven't forgotten about you. You're on the list with other items of discussion, so.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. I'll get the PDF out as quickly as possible and I'll make sure I'm at the next meeting.
All right, Heather, thank you. Okay, so we, we, it's kind of vague here. We've got a discussion, proposed addition for a business. See what if needed or required for a site plan. Proposed change added use of existing business. What if needed or required for a site plan? So we're looking at, I don't know if anybody's seen this, again, this is a PDF.
I haven't. I've seen it.
You haven't?
I've seen it.
Yes. We, we have the PDFs.
So this is not a special permit, it's just a site plan approval.
I believe all they're asking for right now is what else do they need besides this to submit to us to make a decision?
Yeah.
Hi, this is Jeff Rule from the Grammy American Legion. Just letting you know I am on if you have any questions.
We're looking at another one right now.
Hi, Jim.
Who's on?
Ed. Ed, yeah, we, uh, surveyor for the Prostate West State Street at Oz. If you have any questions, I'm on, on, I'm available.
Okay.
Thank you.
So what I, what I I'm looking at existing, let me see if it's proposed here. So what I, what I see is you're adding, you're doubling the size of the building. There's the only you're doubling the size of the building, which does not add to the impervious area because it's all pavement now. You're shifting everything within the existing paving. And you're getting rid of that small green circle towards the front and paving that.
Correct. If I can shed some light on this, back when it was originally built, you can see the peak of the roof is sort of on the left side. Originally it was, it's submitted to the planning board back in the day, back in the, I believe, the mid to late 80s showing that future expansion, they called Phase 2. So as, it'd be like bookmarking the building, so just the gable will be in the end and it'll look symmetrical at that point.
Correct. And they were, he, I think you and Rob were in a short time ago.
That, Mr. Laser, Miss Lenny Laser, US Builders. We, we were at your, one of the board meetings, probably about a year ago.
Time flies. It seemed like it was the other day.
The expansion is going towards Dollar General?
Yes. Yep.
This is actually located near the South Valley Town Line, across the street is the Grandy Mall.
Okay. Was it the wrong spot?
Well, no, on, on sheet four, Will, uh, the yellow rectangle is the proposed addition.
Filled in or the blank yellow? One with the yellow on it?
The filled, the filled in yellow.
Okay.
And you're adding some infiltrators to the
That, that's correct. That's correct.
I don't and that's going to take all the roof leaders, correct?
My understanding is the entire new addition will be discharged through downspouts, the there's a catch basin in the loading dock area which will have a pump and that will pump up towards that infiltration area.
I see that now.
Oh, yeah.
That's going to improve it because there's nothing there now.
Right. Right now, they have a catch basin in the loading dock area, the existing site, that doesn't pump, that goes up to the drywells, I believe, Drywell Number 2.
Where is Drywell Number 2? Oh, in the front, okay, got it. Thank you.
Over existing.
Yep. Everything else keep close. Now.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any. I don't see any issues with it. Is anybody else?
No, we just need all the rest of the paperwork with it.
Correct.
And we would need the other departments' responses.
Well, we'll, we'll get some more copies and get it circulated.
Soon as Kathy has all the paperwork.
I, I believe we dropped off eight paper copies, storm calc's and the PDF version of the plans.
And, but no application?
Uh, we had a hard time finding the application. I'm not sure what, what it's under, if it's under subdivision control law or if it's under the zoning.
It should be just under the planning board. There should be forms that says a site plan approval. One says special permitted site plan approval, I believe.
I'll search it out and download it.
It's not a special permit, though.
It's allowed by use, I mean, by zoning. It's allowed by zoning.
Right. Okay, I don't, I don't take any issue with it. I think it'll be fine, just the way it is. Get the rest of the paperwork in.
We'll get that paperwork, the application to you shortly then.
And we'll give, and, uh, we'll give Kathy the go-ahead to distribute.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that, okay, good. Okay. Very good.
Anything else, Ed?
Well, no, I'm all set in my end. I'm sure we'll be talking in the near future with respect to the formal application.
Is that, do they have a schedule for this? It's kind of right around the
This, this, early winter. So we're, we're on track hopefully to, you know, January 1st. You know, as long as it's a, it's a pretty decent winter.
Okay.
Right.
Very good.
Thank you. Anyway, I'm signing off. Thank you.
Take care. Okay. I don't see, continues, it was supposed to be put on the agenda, but anyway, I think we have somebody here representing the American Legion.
That is correct. This is Jeff Rule, I'm the clerk for the Grammy American Legion 266 Lounge.
What was your name again?
Jeff Rule.
Jeff Rule. Hi, Jeff. So what, what's you explain to me what you're trying to do there?
So we're going from a special events permit, which allows us like one day a week to have food, to a restaurant license. So we're not changing anything with the building or the amount of people or anything like that, just changing, allowing us to serve food every day so that we can reopen.
Due to the new restrictions that the governor put on it, you have to serve food with beer?
That's correct.
Well, from my perspective, it's not a, it's not a use change, it's, you're not doing anything different there. Your, your milestone is with the Board of Health. I don't think, current, in my, in my opinion, I don't think the planning board has any
But he's going from, uh, isn't that the use going from people not necessarily sitting in there eating to people definitely sitting in there eating? Or am I incorrect in that?
We think that, well.
Wouldn't change.
Pardon?
The seating arrangement doesn't change as far as what we're serving. We're still, we'll be following the state guidelines as far as separation of tables and all that, but if it wasn't for the COVID and we were just changing the, the permit, there's no change in the amount of seating.
So you've had people in there eating before?
Correct.
Correct. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, they were doing banquets and they were also, they were serving some food. Yeah, they were doing banquets and they were also, they were serving some food at, at the, the downstairs, I believe, pizzas and stuff like that.
That's correct.
So now they're just trying to formalize it a little bit to comply with the COVID mandate from the governor. But doesn't, it doesn't change anything from a site plan perspective. My, my.
Look at parking area and all that because there's plenty there.
Yep. Right, I, I, this is Bob Sheehan. I personally think that this is a, a no issue for the planning board. As Jim said, the, the real issue I, I would have to think is with the Board of Health.
Right.
Quite frankly, you know, if there was anything we can do to help out, I know you guys are in a tough situation. And
So do we need a motion so that we've got something official saying that we decided?
Yeah, someone, if someone wants to make a motion that there's no, the planning board takes no issue with the, with the, with the existing use, I'm okay with that.
The existing and proposed use?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the existing use and upgraded use due to COVID, that the, we have no issue, we meaning the planning board.
Okay, so let me get that straight. That the planning board takes no issue with the existing and proposed use? Do you want to leave it at that or?
Actually, I, I don't even want to say existing use. I want to say the updated use due to COVID, the planning board takes no issue.
Okay, the planning board takes no issue with the updated use?
Proposed use.
Updated proposed use due to COVID-19. That work?
That works for me.
Need a second.
I'll second. Second from Jason. Any discussion? All those in favor? Bob Sheehan?
Aye.
Lillian?
Aye.
Bob?
I'm definitely in favor, but I'm abstaining because I'm a member of the Grammy American Legion.
Well noted. Jason?
Aye.
Jim is an aye. Motion carries. Guys, you guys are good to go from our perspective.
All right, thank you. I appreciate the time.
Hey, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Well, it looks like we knocked that agenda off quickly.
Yeah, but I got the plans in front of me for the what was that, Living Gate?
That was leftover from last time.
Yeah, what are you, A and R 151 Taylor Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, you vote, you, the board voted on that last.
I've got one, I, I've got a Mylar and one hard copy. That's all it is.
So those are our copies. Yeah, those are our copies to keep.
I just We're just going through some paperwork that you guys, that was left here that you guys haven't seen.
Do you want to go over the action items while you're doing that or?
Go over what?
Action items that we, so we can close them out. There's only three of them.
Sure.
Okay. I was supposed to create a letter to Greg Briggs about Granby Solar LLC and Jim knew where to sign it, which I believe is done. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I was asked Kathy Leonard to let Mr. Catoits know the A and R for Carver slash Chicago B Street needs a locust before the planning board can sign. That's completed. And Ken, research fees, other towns charged for large scale ground mount and solar projects. I believe that's completed.
I think so.
I think he sent that to everybody. That's it?
Perfect. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
Rob will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Bob Sheehan?
Aye.
Lillian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Jims and I. Okay, everybody. Have a good night. Be well.
You too, folks. Take care. Bye bye.
See you, Jim.
Hey, everybody.